June twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. Would please join me by standing for the pledge allegiance, I would appreciate it. Alex, this is your final chance, Olivia.
No, I hope I don't make a mistake.
You've done so well.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, if you please call the roll.
All right. Absence. Cousins.
Here.
Fisher, yes. Griffin, here. Hubbard, here. Michelle's.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Alex.
Here.
Aaron. Absent.
And so now that this is joining us virtually, does she matter or is she not here for this part of this?
She's not.
Actually, not going to be on the virtual, okay. All right, fair enough. Okay, item C is approval of meeting minutes from our work session on June thirteenth, as well as our city council meeting on June fifteenth. Move by Griffin, thank you. Is there a second? Second, second by all, thank you, Mr. Cousins. Griffin, any comments on the minutes? Other council members, comments on the minutes? Okay, Mr. Ben, please call a vote to approve all sessions.
Hubbard, yes. Griffin, yes. Michelle's.
Yes.
Fisher, yes. Cousins.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes. Thank you. Motion approved. So we don't have any dedicated prearranged participation tonight, but I'd like to take the opportunity to ask Mr. Schlaf to come over here, leave with me if you would please. Let's find her, come on around, come on. So everybody can see it, get you on the camera. So we have a very special employee that is going to be leaving this afternoon's meeting, not leaving the city, no, leaving us as an employee for thirty seven years. So Dan, we've prepared a proclamation they like to read it to. Whereas Daniel Schlaf started at the City of Dexter as a part-time summer worker in nineteen eighty four. And whereas he was subsequently hired full-time in July nineteen eighty five and spent five years with the city's Department of Public Works. Whereas Mr. Schlaf transferred to the city's utility department, or villages back then, in nineteen ninety, then became a utilities foreman in two thousand and five. And whereas he became the city's public services superintendent in two thousand and twelve, and spent ten years in that role. Whereas during Mr. Schlaf's time as public services superintendent, the utilities department went from four operators with fourteen total licenses in two thousand and twelve to six operators with sixty-two total licenses. And whereas Mr. Schlaf has led the utilities and public works departments through significant capital improvements, including but not limited to a five and a half million dollar upgrade in the wastewater treatment plant, the replacement of ninety-five percent of the water main in the city, quite a number, installation of the eglazation basin, and changing of the wastewater treatment plants rotating biological contactor to an activated sludge system. And whereas Mr. Schlaf will be retiring as the City of Dexter's Public Services Superintendent on June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, with thirty-seven years of service to the City of Dexter. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Dexter hereby proclaims its thanks and sincere appreciation to Dan for his years of services to the citizens of Dexter. Well done, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to respond to that.
Please. Um, thank you very much.
I didn't know how to put up my beer in this. Thank you very much, but if you really break this down, it takes a strong governing body, it takes a strong city staff, and it takes one hell of a strong community to do all them things that are on here. I wrote some stuff down, do I have time?
You do. All the time you want.
First of all, I'd like to thank the past and present city council members, village and city employees, Donna Dentley, Courtney Nichols, and Justin Riard. I would like to thank you all very much for the support that you have given me over the past thirty-seven years. I really appreciate it. I just wrote down some notes of reflection or things that's happened. We've had a lot of changes in thirty-seven years, the city, back when I was seventeen, eighteen years old. We literally had tens of thousands of cars that go through this town every day. It used to be a sleepy, I call it a sleepy little village, and it has turned into seven days a week, people everywhere, everywhere downtown, and we should be very proud of that. I can remember one of my first jobs as a DPW employee, I had to tear down barns and pull fences on Dan Hoyro. That was to get ready for the ceremony that was going to happen for the industrial park. And I can't remember if that's when I was part-time or full-time, pretty big deal back then. One of my regular jobs that I had for the DPW is we used to have parking meters up top. I don't know if everybody remembers that or not, but I had to collect the money out of the parking meters and they gave me this thing on wheels that had a funnel on top with a tube, and I had to be escorted. What's really funny is I remember the police officer I went with, his name, Mr. Pranuski. I'd have to go with a police officer to go collect all these pennies, and then we'd take them to, I believe, Great Lakes Bank. And his wife was the one that ran that bank. And they had the only change counter in the, in the village at the time. And then somehow that money got back, you know, to the village. I can't remember how long the parking meters were around, but Donna, Paul, I know you remember. My least favorite job for the DPW when I worked there is probably had something to do with the transfer, you know, a few years after I got down there, we would have to go out with brooms and sweep downtown. We'd come in at one o'clock in the morning and sweep it by hand. Why we couldn't afford a sweeper, I still, I probably will never get the answer to that, but I was so far down the food chain at that time that it didn't matter. When we brought in Dexter Crossing, Heron Farms, and West Ridge into the city, that was a lot of challenges and new experiences. And when we removed the mill pot, what a change. We had a bridge that the school buses and the fire department couldn't drive from for a while. But what a change it made. What a change it made. Last but not least, I'm very thankful to be part of such a wonderful community of Dexter that we all live in. We're so very lucky to have. Maybe you think about what Sean ran, and there's been many years before that, it takes a song community, staff members, and council to do everything. It's just not a two-year reporter turn to get, that gets that kind of stuff done. Thank you all very much, and I'll see you around town.
Hopefully Allison's ready to read it for your homework.
Yeah, you know, and I, I do have one more thing, or two more things. I got two more things. Got a little caught up in the moment. Um, I'd like to thank my wife and all my children for all the sacrifices that had to be made. This job that Tim Stewart wants so badly, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three sixty-five, and there's going to have to be sacrifices made. My wife also made me up some new business cards. I think they're a little funny, but down at the bottom.
Give you money, wait till later. You didn't ask for all the, say what you think. Well, I don't say that, but thank you.
So who's on that, or is that really that?
That's really me, no.
That's great. We didn't even have gray hair, Dan, when you started, Scott. You didn't have gray hair.
It's great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that was well worth the ten minutes, appreciate it. We're down to item E, which is approval of the agenda. What do you think of the agendas?
I'm going to move the agenda as presented.
Move by Fisher, thank you, Donna. Second by Griffin, thank you. I didn't just do it on agenda or discuss it. Seeing none, Mr. Ben, please call a vote to approve the agenda.
Cousins.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Fisher, yes. Griffin, yes. Michelle's.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes. Okay, item F, Declaration of Capes of Interest. Do you have any caps in there? Just three shells, yes, sir.
Fortunately, consent agenda, please pay money to my employer, so I'm going to not participate in the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. We are on to item G, which is public hearings. We have none of those this evening. So we're back around to non-arranged participation. We start from the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to say something? Okay, we'll look on screen then to our virtual participants. If anyone wants to speak tonight on any item, please use the raise hand function feature. Gosh, I can't see every box, but it doesn't look like I've seen any.
You have no raise hands.
Okay, so let's reflect that we have no non-arranged participation this evening. Page thirteen and fourteen, as the upcoming meeting list. Any comments on upcoming meetings? Yeah, so it's at five thirty on the eleventh. And I've still got Paul on here as representative for Dexter Chamber of Commerce, but when we get to that. I'm going to call here if you're there, if no else wants to do that. Okay, so no other comments on the calendar, get to move on to reports. And I thought Dan would give him a smiley report. Maybe he just did, so Jim, welcome.
Thank you. How's everybody?
Good, you?
Good, good. So obviously this is two-week report. If you get any more questions, I'm going to give you a couple of updates and smaller stuff too.
I just want to, I'd like to comment, I, I have thought several times over your comments about the fourth grade visit. And that is wonderful, and I just want to bring it up again one more time, that I, I'm glad that you feel like you want to continue that.
Oh, absolutely. No, I thought it was a good, kids really liked it, and so the teacher loved it, and so, but it was a nice thing, and it was cool. So we'll keep that going as long as they want to go.
I have one question about the speaking of students coming, different students, the ones asking about the trash can. So I heard from somebody, they, so we moved the trash can instead of putting a new one.
Yeah, we don't keep them our own, they don't keep them, I should say, in stocks, so to speak, because they're spending, they're around sixteen hundred dollars a piece.
Okay.
So eventually we'll get another one put back in place, but it'll, we're going to do the next fiscal year.
Okay, so I just knew somebody who apparently has strong affinity to the other location and was looking around for it.
Top of circles?
Right, right, and so anyway. So I was like, wow, we're just getting a new one.
Yeah, she was actually there when Kurt was president, he explained to her, but so, I just said, for now, temporarily moved over to there and then grabbed them.
Yeah, the, the trash cans that surround the shop, once we get home, they, they go out.
Wow, I see that you did two art installs, and I obviously not getting around much these days, I saw the one at Bylaw Fontaine, which is the other one that got put in.
The art, you said?
Yeah.
Uh, there's one downtown area?
Yeah, so there's, yeah, so there's four. There's one in the circular seating area, just up, um, Oak Creek Park.
Yeah.
There's one in front of what used to be our disco, now enjoyable.
Right.
Um, law on pain, and then there's one over near the library between the stairs.
Right, and so have they all been put in one?
They are all.
Okay, because this just says two, so two were four, so now they're all in?
They are.
I wouldn't know this if I was starting, you know, stand up and wash, but thank you.
They'll do, they'll do, they'll provide pictures.
That would be great, I would like that.
And you?
I've got a question, just I had to run that up in the parks meeting and maybe relevant. So the swings at the parks, I mean specifically at P D D Park and Mill Creek. So they used to have two bucket swings each, and then since they're replaced, and one of the traditional bucket swings that each location got replaced with like a half bucket that has a plastic coated chain that goes right in front. Um, yeah, maybe, and I can tell there's greater accessibility for that. But I'm also, but at the park, when children have like, you always look out at those because young kids usually want to go in the bucket swings, and then now there's only one bucket swing, and that, that other style doesn't afford the same protection they want to swing high, and then they just, there used to be a little to flat forward in that bucket swing, catches them, but that changes and do the same thing, so I'm just thinking, somebody goes to these parks a lot, I'm curious, I want to be linked with public thing. Seems like more often than not, when I'm at the park, granted it's with younger kids, the bucket swings are in high domain, and the traditional swings sit. So even if you do want to keep that accessible swing, can still get back to two regular bucket swings, and just reduce the number of traditional swings, so those can be reduced less, but I don't know what went into that, I just wanted to share.
Yeah, so, so, so I know that Kurt did some work, because some of the swings, like the, the top of the chain was starting to wear, and so Kurt went through it and did some replacements of, of the fixtures, the swings installed. So we can, we can talk with that and see.
Yeah.
And you said, which parts of you said are around, or?
Well, just if we could add, because the traditional swing is now with a traditional bucket swing, the kind of like the, the hard plastic called wear. And we can keep though, so that we would have two of those, and then one for the chair. Because they do think the chain is, you get hit in and out of, but it's kind of for slightly older child, it's maybe more for how the word is experienced at the time, so the babies were a lot better off than that.
Yeah, I can talk to everyone about that. Anybody else?
Second street looks great.
That's what I was going to bring up, so we're supposed to do the final lift on Wednesday for the, uh, the asphalt itself. Um, we raised two manholes today to get everything upgraded, up to par in there. A little inconvenience lately, and, you know, the driving portion of it, but everything else turned out really well. Um, I'm really happy with it. Uh, we had a recon for Third Street last week, so.
Are the residents with the sidewalk heavy?
Yes, and it gets, it's amazing. It's, yeah, I'm surprised, I've been good, and I don't walk around, obviously. But it's, it's amazing how many people actually walk down there. I was there the other day with, talking to Jeff, and it was just, I mean, it's, it's a good, good thing.
And the sidewalk too, the worship park is, is, and really nice.
Yeah, everything worked out pretty good.
I, I didn't go through very exciting. My step, stay away from there. Rule follower.
No, everything's turned out well, and I think that they're going to be extremely happy up there. Um, especially if some of those areas that were kind of quite wet before, I don't think they're going to have that issue anymore. So then, like I said, the, the interior is next Tuesday, we'll be over on Broad Street.
And then what is it, is it, um, seed or what kind of?
They're in higher season.
I just think.
Yep, yep, so, and we're hoping to get that done by the end of the.
Great. Sure, I'm good. And then, uh, where it starts after the fourth?
Yeah, it'll start next Tuesday.
So back to the next.
Yep. All right.
It's a good weather and happy life.
Yeah.
Not a lot of.
Yeah, more days like today, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, questions for Tim? Well, we look forward to having you turn the chapter on new stage of leadership there, sir.
Appreciate that, so I look forward to it, he's right.
Did he give you one of these?
Yeah, I got one last week. But he's had all those sayings to me for the last two, three months. I've been used to it.
Well, he can help you, help you shine a light.
And, and, and we've, we've been talking about what, uh, what the transition looks like and, um, negotiating.
Yes, that's very.
All right. All right, cool, thanks.
Thank you.
Next up is our community development manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, palace council this evening.
I have to say, live from New York, but not this.
Not this time, um, but they will be here in two weeks. I'm a little excited about that, so, um, obviously I won't be here on the fourteenth and fifteenth because of it, but I won't miss a meeting, so.
Be careful of swings with the chains.
I know, I know, I know. It's a good point, though. I can literally visualize, oh, yeah.
Rock them up in the bucket and do a play.
Who's to take a blanket along, so they can go anywhere.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Yeah, come in there. So you've got my two-week report in front of you, and you also have the updates to my report. Before I, I actually don't have any verbal updates, so if you've got any questions for me, let me know, and I'll be happy to address them.
Just, um, all your updates, anybody have any questions on the, um, Heron Farms portion of her report? It's all the planter, or else?
It would be the only go part of the boundaries of the city.
It's going to be a net being for the city, this would be what I'm trying to characterize with that.
My gut says yes. I have, we have not seen any numbers yet. This is very early on in the process. And when I say yes, I look at it in a very comprehensive way, from, um, from the extension of the services to the planning and zoning, and then tying it all together with the beginning of development. What they do there could have some very positive impacts on the rest of the city, especially the downtown and the businesses there, and the potential for other businesses. Likewise, what we have beyond just utilities could be very beneficial to them as well, so the numbers will, will definitely be looked at, they'll have to be looked at by both sides. And that will answer your question in a totally different way, but that gives you an idea of where I'm coming from, looking at it.
Go ahead, Zach.
Well, I kind of little bit of details, I was actually the planner for Dexter Township when they came in, and we had to rewrite zoning ordinance for them, because we like the project. They, Zingermans does things very slowly. They're still in kind of what I call the beta testing phase of that facility. They're not still running at full capacity, they're still testing it, building up. For them to come to us, they understand where they're at, what they need, because they spent over three hundred thousand dollars for a septic field. And they're saying that's, that's not cutting it.
For what they want to do currently, but building up, which is that, but future plans cost benefit for them, it doesn't work. It, it, it barely allows them to operate. And the constant maintenance and all, including, we won't get into the other details, it's just not practical for them, so they did give us, again, we haven't talked about them, but they did all do to that fact that they have no misgivings of what they're looking at. And they've done the exercise over the course of years to understand them before making their costs, so.
Well, the long-term thought is it might not always be a growth form. I know, I'm just, two, two is actually here.
So from a planning and zoning, and, and Zach, please chime in. It's going to be a very interesting exercise in planning and zoning this, because we don't allow things like people that have chickens, backyard chickens, or goats, or anything else.
Or bees.
Uh, or bees, thank you. And you can't just create a single zoning district for one parcel with just a set of specific uses, unless in some way we do make conditions only.
Which could work.
Which could work, right, I have not started beyond just a small little mental exercise, what potential options there are for this. That will come, you know, that will definitely come in the future. But creativity may be a, a, maybe the lens in which would be the best one to look at this through, as opposed to the traditional planning and zoning.
So it's very, meaning, so definitely different than a P U D.
Right, the P U D still have to, has to follow the uses that are in the ordinance. And this is, um.
So it's combination beyond that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, have they given you any indication of what potential future use might be other than what they're doing?
Uh, it's, so, uh, at some time, at some point, I think they're looking, and this is something they were doing even when it was Dexter Township. It still is Dexter Township. Uh, future, uh, being able to have overnight accommodations. Um, I don't want to say hotel, motel kind of thing, but their business is a very comprehensive model. So, you know, while you've got farm to table, food, and, um, that activity, you also have their whole wedding banquet, um, uh, end of the, of the, of the business. So it's, 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 it doesn't get tangy, it doesn't get wrapped up with the tiny little traditional zoning ball. I'm kind of looking forward to seeing how this is going to work out, but it's definitely going to be interesting.
I did invite, I did invite supervisor to Dexter Township to attend a meeting, so that she was aware. And let her know that, you know, we're not necessarily looking to, and somebody, but requiring people, you don't provide water and sewage outside of dungeons without the pressure coming in, so.
And she seemed very.
She seemed okay, I don't know what her words would say, or how they're going to, you know, pursue, but, at least they're at the table initially, and the first conversation, so, I thought that was important.
If there are no other questions for me, I will ask one of you all, have you seen the banner covers?
Yeah, great.
Aren't those gorgeous? I'm super happy with how they turned out. Um, I can't thank Neil at Dexter Print and Foodery enough, he's worked with us very carefully. The, the price is right. Excuse me, he was able to mass produce once we had the test ones completed. And I would be remiss if I did not thank DPW and Kurt and his crew, because like I've said, we've heard me say this before, they put those barricades up, I mean, they must have used a level to precisely get them in that nice, beautiful straight line, and then to put the banners up like they did, I mean, it looks great. Mike Holzer, you saw, I believe, in here, in my, uh, report, he's the owner of Dairy Queen, he sent Justin an email this morning, uh, thanking us all for how great they look, so.
Good work.
Thank you a lot.
I do have one question, as I don't get here to stick up for anyone. If this goes in.
Yes, sir.
The one next to the fire station, and we have to move it because we're putting parking in, or at least do we pay to relocate it, or is it A T and T?
So this one isn't A T and T, it's just Horizon.
Right, so.
Yeah, um, um, I, I'm presuming, I haven't looked into that, um, but I'm presuming if it's our, um, reason it's being moved, we would. Um, it is in the right of way, I'm not, oh, you mean, uh, you're thinking on-street parking?
I think we just got the parking charter, it's actually pretty close to the intersection. We look for the stop sign, and we should just stop at one spot or something, if we got there.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
No, I'm.
Yeah. But if we did, if it had to move, we would. Um, just as a, a quick FYI, um, you'll recall that when this came through, one of the things that Chief Smith had questioned was interference from the tower to the emergency, um, radio operations. They did provide a, um, uh, written explanation or, uh, proof that it would not. That was provided to Chief Smith, and he's accepted it.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Next on the list of reports is our sheriff's report. Any questions on the sheriff?
Just know that they, if you saw in my report that they do that's holding custody for some incidents that have been reported around town.
Yeah, I guess I'd be happy to go record, thanking them for that. I know they were present in our neighborhood.
Yeah, so I don't really have a lot of verbal updates, so if they have any questions.
Yes, I wanted to say thanks for all your work on the budget process. A lot of information there. Maybe we're gonna take action on that one, it's good.
This, this seems a lot more effective than what we've been using. I'll be curious, maybe if you get feedback from Maria.
So, so.
On the other side of that.
Maria already tested me saying that it's the sound was much better. So.
Oh, I did receive one comment on the stencils. And I did look for them, the lock your wheels stencil, somebody commented that maybe the white didn't stand out as well on the lighter pavement. I saw it, it's probably smaller than I could have thought, but maybe discreet, someone discreet, the lower board work, so. I mean, I know you were maybe looking at a decal or something, but that's been hard to see.
Yeah, I can, yeah, if they send me a sticker that you saw somewhere, and we're gonna turn looking into.
Gonna pass it around, graphic, graphic, graphic X is what they said, is the word from.
Graphic X.
And that sounds like something they shouldn't be searching on, if you think, whatever.
Well, we did, we did some research, and there's a company out of Troy that does something similar to. We'll be, we'll, we'll do some research.
In terms of the accounting, I don't know when this is last, I mean, I know two years ago, the lease renewed, but I don't know if there's any way to get any background information, but I would really like to tell that. So when, when I do prepare that for the package, or, I'd be curious.
So, yeah, the, the lease was booked for renewal in October. Do you want to have some conversations about that in September or August?
It kind of allows, if there is not the master package published.
It's gonna be done there, so I think we'll discuss it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, since it's been, it's been twenty twelve, I think I was there once, it maybe it's been since twenty twelve, but we've been, or since twenty twelve, we purchased the property next to it.
No.
I think it was twenty fifteen, maybe?
He did after.
He, he purchased the piece of property in somewhere between twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, I wanna say.
Anyway, it just seems to me like it's permanent settlement, and I'd be curious. Is there something that needs to be, we just try to sell it, right? And maybe, maybe that's all we're doing right now.
And then also, Justin? Okay, we'll flip the page to page three of the agenda. My report's at the top of the page. I did report the list of appointment and reappointment recommendations on the packet for you. That's on the consent agenda, several reappointments, one new appointment, Tom Coburn to the planning commission. Somebody recalled twenty years ago, Tom was on the planning commission.
Yeah.
And stepped off, and he was on the D V A for a little while. He's online, you're listening, I know. That was, he always takes a bit of interest when somebody's talking about him, sure. A real good guy, lives over on Edison Street. That's the one new name on the list. And then, I'm, I'm doing a new business today. Yeah, organizational matters, and wanted to make sure everybody saw that Sanam volunteer take down his place on arts culture heritage, so I'm very okay with that recommendation, and thanks for your support there. And I didn't hear from anybody relative to Chamber of Commerce, but I'm willing to give that a try on Wednesdays. But I'd like to do, Donna, you're technically listed on there as an alternate, but I don't know if you're around to be able to do that. If you're not, maybe we could have a staff member be the alternate, make sure we're getting there.
Are you saying you need, you think you may need the alternate?
Well, there might be a time. I mean, like, out of town, or.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Or I have to, sometimes I have to travel.
Just let me know, if you can just let me know.
Okay.
And I'm not here and there, I'll come.
Okay.
To do it.
Everybody's okay with me being the primary, we'll get to that item. I'm happy to try and do that.
I have one question.
Yeah, please.
So the name Tom Coburn sounded familiar. Was there somewhere, is there some ownership of the stolen property?
He and Midwestern Consulting have been representing that property for years, yes. I, you know, Tom and I talked about that, when I talked to him, and I said, and he has actually some other potential properties in town that he's could be tied to as a consultant. And I told him it wouldn't be the first time that somebody had to recuse themselves. Tom Phillips, a long time co-chair of the whole planning commission, is, works for Hudson Black. And he's had to recuse himself for all the, the brewery that's been closed up. You know, it's not uncommon, but the irony of some of this is that a lot of people who are in the business of development are the ones that are interested in being on the planning commission. Because they know the role, they have background in it, so it's not unusual, I think, to have that happen, but I think, I think Tom's history of living here and this, his knowledge of all the D V A works. He's real practical minded, a little pressure minded, and cares a lot about good development. He's very insightful, so. I was excited when he, he actually applied over a year ago, but we didn't have an open, so I just sort of took the easy way around, I called him and said, hey, would you, would you consider, he said, yes. But yeah, glad to ask those questions. Questions for me. I want to thank Wow for the opportunity of the proclamation of the Pride Month gathering. Especially Wednesday in Mine Park, real well attended and real well organized by the youth group there and Dr. Pride Foundation, is that my close?
Dr. Pride Festival?
That's.
Yeah, it's their second year, and it's definitely grown since last year. Proud of them, did a great job.
No questions for you? Okay, I will, I'm the council member for it, so anyone would like to give. Okay, we have a eight, I don't consent agenda, so.
Read through.
Read out the motion by.
And we approve the eight items listed on the consent agenda, bills and payroll, and the honor of four hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-two cents for board committee appointments. The twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendments, and D V A budget amendments, and the peace gather resolution. Road closures for the holiday hustle, Baker Chile Water and Sanitary Study, and C B S proposal for O R A actuarial. In an amount now to the six thousand two hundred dollars.
Very good, I agree with all those, is there a second?
Okay.
If I watch, yes. This man, if you would please, I'll vote to approve the eight items on the consent agenda.
Michelle's?
Which day?
Griffin, yeah. Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Fisher?
Yes.
Kio.
Yes, which carries five zero, we have no unfinished business this evening, so we're quickly on to page four of the agenda at seven forty-four. Uh, new business item M one, is consideration of the general appropriations act.
Almost to the gap, with this layer twenty-two, twenty-three budget add, every year, with the.
Excellent, this is Griffin.
A second.
Fisher. Okay. Or we should turn it over to Justin. If you want to add, you put a lot of work in.
For all the discussion, we have the last couple ones that went into the creation of the budget document. This is, we'll have the, the end of the beginning. Because once, once it's adopted, it's time to be implementation stage, implementation stage is that we move on to the audit stage, so we're always in three stages of budget at any given point. So this takes this budget from one stage to the next. I don't think there's any surprises in here that we haven't already talked about. If anybody has any questions, we can have to check the answer.
So does this, it's like in a couple spots in terms of discretionary, the leftover discretionary, the general. If city council desires, there are many more, the new bill could be a natural priority session.
So that would be a separate action. We would decide to move money into a like general reserve to a specific or, or, or occupancy to distribute. That's, 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 yeah, separate from the budget.
So, so, so if, if the goal is to basically take just whatever is left over in this year twenty-one, twenty-two, and move it over. Um, Murray and I would recommend waiting until at least after the end of August, when we've kind of wrapped up.
Good question. So you know how their hands, hands, or did you know? Okay, oh, it's okay. Please call the vote to approve.
Michelle's?
No.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Fisher?
Yes.
Kio.
Yes. Okay, yeah, okay. Wanted to for the next one, excellent. New business item M two, consideration of city council organizational matters.
I love that.
And move by Fisher, thank you. That's right, Griffin. Okay, is that okay? Going my name in on this one?
Yeah.
On mine there?
It's just on the cover letter, it says, A C H is seven A M. I assume that's just a typo. Could have gotten me there at seven A M, I'll do that.
Sorry about that.
Okay, this man, please call the vote to approve the organization act.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Kio.
Yes, thank you. That'd be my first reading, this one's good. Uh, let's see, M three, consideration of Baker Road Construction Design Services for an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand eight hundred.
A second.
So, my cousins, second by one, thank you all.
So I saw Patrick sneak in. He's here to provide some support on this item. So we, we.
Is it really design services?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, we just read construction, which is why.
Oh, sorry, well, I mean, the, the design blocks.
Is, yeah, construction, sorry.
But, so we had applied through the tip for Baker Road from Maine to Grand. And we were awarded those dollars for twenty twenty-four calendar year. In order to kind of meet the deadlines that M dot puts in place and the potential barriers that get put in place with M dot projects. It's best to start those projects, or to start those designs and start the process as early as possible. So we had included in the budget, the Baker Road design services for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And that's what we're proposing with this item. If you have anything to add.
And this segment's much more straightforward. And certainly, we know third and Broad is just getting started, that had a lot more complications with the railroad. We're really just doing a mill and overlay, similar look was done back in two thousand seventeen, was part of a roundabout project we did, that segment just north. Where we know, like, the existing asphalt, would be basically the same type of project.
Zach? It's a lot here, I only see make revisions to plans based on comments received from M dot. Will also be revision based on what you received from the city and residents?
So, of course.
Okay.
Five hundred and no, sorry, the, the total project is in the five hundreds, but we're getting three hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and ten dollars.
Thank you.
We've had some conversations about the acceptable parking, and I don't know if that is relevant to this stretch or not.
It, it would be, we know we talked about this particular block was one of the ones that, again, depending on how you cut up the downtown area. You know, there was a deficiency, if you kind of, you know, did a more generalized takeoff on the spaces. So you could, you know, that's a possibility, there's, there's room out there. What you likely have to do is basically just move the curb line over, and then the sidewalk back up to the sidewalk along the street, so it could be done.
Yeah, I guess they don't necessarily get strong about it either way, forgetting what we talked about last time, that just maybe something to keep on the radar.
Other questions for Patrick or Justin? Okay, this man, please call the vote to approve the proposal for design services.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Kio?
Yes. Which carries, thank you Patrick for your work on that, and for attending this evening. New business item M four, consideration of the Verizon A T S C small cell wireless facilities permit. I move based on the information provided by staff and reflected in minutes of this meeting to approve A P twenty twenty-one point twenty-two dash fifteen R S C W Dexter Ann Arbor Road Small Cell Wireless Facilities Permit Application. With insulation colocation of a new small cell equipment on a replacement A T and T pole is cited here in accordance with chapter fifty of the city's actual general code of ordinances and public act three sixty-five twenty eighteen as amended. Subject to the following conditions of being addressed to satisfaction of city staff prior to issuance of the permit, that the applicant shall submit revised attestation letter and certificate of insurance. Thank you, which one, Michelle's, second by Griffin.
So you'll remember that the first time that this came through, it was just for the equipment. And that was because A T and T and Verizon needed to work out their arrangements. And that has been done, and so instead of just coming in for a poll and then having these two separate permits, they've submitted one complete application, and that was really the way the legislature intended the ordinance to work. So thankfully, they have done that, the two companies are working together, and they put together, excuse me, their application, it's technically complete. And when you come through for all the different little permitting things, it's just the attestation letter and the certificate of insurance. Because most of it's already been being worked on since it was just the wireless equipment. So, online, there are some representatives from both Telecad and from Verizon, so if you've got any questions for them. Scott Hubble and Lane Hallman are online, along with, I believe, the Dave is, Dave Hasslinger. So, other than that.
I don't have any questions, does anybody have any questions?
My understanding is they were responsive to our I guess request about the design being leave them with other things, so. They were responsive to our requests about the design being more cohesive with what we already had in place.
So that's the downtown pole. That's the one I know. It was in my staff report providing what it looks like. Excuse me. This one is just the typical AT and T wood pole that's already on the corridor. That one's governed. Through the Metro Act, except when it's placed for a small cell colocation. Clear as mud.
Is it the same for the people?
I'm sorry.
Is it the same for the people?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to thank them for being responsive. Suggestions even not this fall.
Yes, no, they were receptive. It 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 did take a while. There's a lot to 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 weed through, but in the end. It will it'll be a decorative pool, like I said, in my report, the base won't be. But the trade off is by not having that flooded base, most of the equipment that's electronic, it's put down there nice out of sight, not cluttering.
And just for my own. That's I'm looking at it wrong. On the agenda, we had RWSC in the packet we got.
R S.
C W, I think is correct.
Yes. Yeah.
Does that stand for something?
So when I set up the permit process in B S and A, I have to give it an abbreviation. So right away, small cell wireless.
Okay.
So that's what that is. That's all.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle? Full disclosure, I do have Verizon, but it looks like it would be outside the range of all these cells. But I I I will seriously say that this proposed poll and the other ones, if you've seen what some of these installations look like in other places, this is a lot better. Okay, this man please call the vote to approve the facilities.
Hubbard. Yes. Michelle's.
Yes.
Griffin. Cousins.
Yes.
Fisher. Yes. Kyo.
Yes. Welcome, Karen. Thank you for attending online, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you to Michelle for your due diligence and hard work on this. We appreciate your help.
The business item M five discussion of sale of personal property draft charter and.
So this is just discussion I have. But we've kind of talked informally. A number of times and most recently during budget discussions and goal setting about. What we do as far as the sale of equipment. And most recently, city council put forward a question on a survey to talk about. Or to ask residents what they thought about. The concept of rechanging the language or amending the language. So I wanted to put something together to kind of start that conversation, especially if council was interested in having something on the November. Election ballot because the deadline to to get that forward is August.
I think it's a wonderful idea and I'm very particular to see the response of the community and thank you for putting that together and putting it in front of us.
Seems like there's two choices. Page two thirty five looks like, oh, but all that would be displayed. So they would see two different.
So. So 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 the only thing that the residents who are voting on it would actually see is that very bottom part under the further be a further resolve of that. But there's kind of two ways to amend the language to make. In the actual charter and Scott Scott said that he thought the the second one was a little bit better. So that that was kind of his preference, but he said he thought that either one would work.
I'm fine differing the half. I mean, I think the second one is where it does explicitly excluding personal property on the permit. That's what you're saying. I don't want the interpretation.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. So. I'm going to make it more confusing of potential so here. So if there are multiple charter. Amendments before the voters, the one that gets the most votes is the one that gets enacted. So where my complication would be is we have this most basic one that allows us to sell equipment. And then another one that would say, can we sell actual real property if six of the council members? Say yes, except for the parks and cemeteries and those things. I say that again, because in in the public development world, strictly following this. We would have to put a vote to the folks if we want lease fire station. Which is. I'm afraid that they call seven of us, which we really want a piece of the fire station and it also complicates community development. If all six of the seven members think it's a good thing, then I think. Again, just might put a whole sense out there to make it more complicated. I like it.
So you're saying the two are. Because this one is really silent about the leasing. I mean, because you could propose one that does well, we got personal property and the changes. What you're saying.
Yeah, and then. That's a weird again, very nerdy thing, but if you have two that deal with the same section. One against the most votes.
And what is the second one they're proposing?
Would also include. The physical property, but allow for the sale. Of the property excluding parks and cemeteries, which the state says we have to require vote for sale of those. But allow other sale with six of seven council members approval without a vote.
I think I'd rather come in all around you wanted to say. Different as six of seven people. And I'm trying to look up, I know.
The relative, the relative. Value. Rebel guilty value that dollar values would change over time. Whereas six out of seven is two six out of seven.
Right, but there are different ways you can write that. And I think I'm trying, I know I've seen an example where it was. So for example. In East Lansing, the proposed amendment will continue the requirements of whole approval of the sale of public land that exceeds four dollars per cap unit value. But it will not the adjustment of that value applies to. I'd definitely be into more details, but I think there are ways you don't need to write that screw value, but you can write a value that.
It's allowed to just change the charter to say. Less than a hundred thousand dollars itself. And now we're both real or otherwise. If it's really the value that you worry about. Well, because it could, from the skeptic's side point, it could. Use it to mischief or city council agrees to sell something for a hundred thousand dollars. It's worth two million to get around that.
I mean, I think the point was to return some control back to the people and just be, I think you can have six of seven people on the council. Decision that's not in favor of what people want to do when it comes to selling, selling all the property. And.
It's unanimous.
It has been unanimous. It has been unanimous. I find that it's currently written. Either one, but if Scott's preference is the second one, I find that excluding personal property. And the proposal is written below that.
Okay, so this is the first draft source in language. So then if we've got suggested alternatives. That's why you don't have to go review. You know, my Scott. Remind me when we need to take action on this again. August.
So I think we're still good with the first meeting in August.
So we've got three meetings, yeah, same. Thank you for bringing in.
That August sixteen, just so I understand what you mean, I often have to go, you know, it's going to get to the county clerk also. So we're twenty seven or August sixteen.
Yeah, so 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 August sixteen, that fourth, yeah, is the drop in. We have to submit that language to the county.
So it would already had to go through the state. Is that what I'm reading here?
So 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 I I think the the earlier we start that process, the better, but. I I I have to double check on the state process. But I I think if whereas the. Process that we went through last time was the citizen initiated charter amendment process. I think the state is more limited to say, you know, city council and run it by the city attorney. Yeah. And that that this is valid language.
I mean, I just I should have probably ignored it for process, but I couldn't tell anyway, the level was written if it meant. That prior August sixteen, it had to go through the state and then the county or if it was the county. I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I I I I don't. It it doesn't say that in in the documents that that I want that that it has to be too separate, that it has to be too separate. But. I think the sooner we can get to the state better.
Okay, so if you have any suggestions on this, give it to Justin. Other discussion I have next time. Remind me that this charter that I was proposed doesn't apply to the V A, right?
That's 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 Scott's interpretation.
How did the the math on the questions come out of that? I know it doesn't add to a hundred percent. So this is, we had three, three choices for people in our survey.
Yes. And then and then there's a certain number that's yes.
With the multiple choice, or I mean, it was one, two, and five.
So so the two hundred and eighty eight.
Yeah, yeah, so 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 you 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 could you could pick multiple options. So so you.
Okay, that's what I didn't get.
Yeah.
I didn't remember that. Okay.
So you you could say, you know, basically any of these are fine. I I, you know, I checked the box for one, two, and three. Or just one or none.
You have another fifty percent. Like the minimum value, I would say, just looking at the top one. In terms of our word. Which I realized that went through it that way, so. Okay, we're going to move on to number six.
Yeah.
Discussion of the city council compensation ordinance amendments.
Yeah, so again, another discussion I don't, this was proposed during budget discussions. And want to provide a draft for the start of city council discussion. If we went through the process of adopting the ordinance, it wouldn't take it back until the next city council gets seated, which would take place in November.
I was not here. I think this was great during budget work session that I did not attend. So I'm just curious to know the rationale. Particularly, you know, at starting point, like what if, what do we think the point of compensation is in these roles? Is it? You know, token of appreciation, is it to, in theory, pay for childcare? So if somebody wants to be on council, they're paid for childcare. Is it? Something for the time spent hourly? I'm just wondering what if people, it had something in mind. Has come in the last.
I think it was two thousand and one.
But I I can answer my rationale because I was probably the fellow who kicked that beat the hardest is. It's. We we have folks here who probably do for no money. But we also have to plan for the future when that may not be the case. And if folks have to choose between, am I going to do daycare? Am I going to pay for the kids or am I going to work? That's going to draw people who could otherwise serve here and serve the community and provide those voices that will cause them to self select out. I'm also seeing cases where. Folks get their compensation out by doing things that they shouldn't do. It it happens and so it's it's tried, you know, to soften that. And when I, when I look at it, I, just for my example here. It was a couple of years ago when I was actually, I could have heard the property tax exception. I was making so little money. And, you know, I I I could choose between refereeing hockey and get paid a hundred and twenty dollars a night. And just three hours on there, I'm done or here where it's a long time, a lot of preparation. And and so. I've seen the pinch when when you look around how we compare with other communities, we're significantly lower than that. That's your township right now is over six thousand dollars a year, one meeting a month, whether or not you show up. So it's it's.
No, no attendance requirement, there isn't.
Nope, you can be in Florida for three meetings a year and still get the same. So it's meant to make sure that folks are able to participate and bring voices that might otherwise be self selected.
And this was only if I didn't remember or does it go with it? Because my chance, like you couldn't vote on, you couldn't like get the raise you voted on.
We we could. We can't reduce our pay.
It 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 goes into effect once the next council gets seated. So you you all can vote on it and then the next election happens this November, end of November, new council seats.
I appreciate, you know, for some reason, I don't necessarily feel comfortable doing it, but.
I used to look at it when we first came to this childcare desk.
Yeah. Yes.
I could be a senator and I could talk and. Otherwise, I could go with the various things, but not thinking of anywhere. They were true. I need to sit there.
That's why you don't talk, because you can be talking to me.
We talk.
Yeah, so I get the fact that if I'm voting against because I want to make it easier for other people.
Yeah, and and that's why we structured it to be after November as opposed to immediately. And then it.
I was going from one to a hundred. Or I mean, to be higher than that.
What the one it does is allows us to start to catch up with what it would have been from two thousand one. It's not big, but it's a little. So we'll rip that back again. Yeah, we're doing that last special item, the special of arts and culture heritage community compensation resolution.
So again, this was talked about during budget discussions. Whereas city council is done by resolution, the board of committees typically can be done through resolution. Almost all of our other board and committees are compensated.
But not fully, not fully liaisons.
But except for the liaison, except in the council, which we're appointed to serve on the boards.
Okay.
That's correct.
Good.
But planning is forty, Z B A gets forty, Perks and Records twenty, election commission gets twenty. But planning gets forty, ZBA gets forty, perks and records twenty, watching commission gets twenty. As of right now. And so the resolution, I just put a number in there and said, you know, someone parks and rack.
Yeah. I just say, no, everybody on that committee would do, has done it for free, would keep doing it for free, but they put in a lot of hours. And, you know, like I, I think I said before, when I was on that committee, I didn't even realize that other committees got paid, but, but, you know, I don't think they really, you know, they're not asking for this, but I think they deserve it and it's a reminder for me.
And then it wouldn't spread me out that a lot of them donated the money back for what it's paying back for.
Okay, so maybe we bring both back at the same time.
So, so with the ordinance, that, that, that'll take up all the hearing.
Oh, yeah. Let's set that. Motion on the next time we set it. Okay, now the council comments. Well, I would like to.
Sure.
Go first.
Yeah. First of all, sorry, I'm here last week or two weeks ago. This is an ongoing problem. Please don't put this in the minutes about my broken leg angle situation. They'll never run into flip flops. But I really want to say that it was great to attend Friday this year and I hope all you guys might become in the future. Great group of kids. I think there were a lot more adults there this year. I saw Emily talk about how we're the only pride festival in the area that's organized by young adults. So I think we should really, you know, really proud of our high schoolers and what they're out there doing and you know, they're, they're brave and they're fearless and it's just a huge change from when I was in high school and it's just really, really nice to see. So happy pride, everyone.
My, my granddaughter enjoyed it.
Good.
She's back school a while here.
For seventeen.
That's it. And I think one of our incoming student reps is actually going to want to.
Yeah. Yeah, he is on the committee. He was on the committee last year. He's actually the one who reached out to me this year to, you know, have us join them again. And we're really, really happy to be able to tell them that we have the resolution already ready to go. So that's exciting. So thanks, Sean, and everybody else.
We can do more than that together. All set?
Yeah.
No, it's great. Jenny?
I was going to say thanks to Dan, he's not here. I can send that in a minute. Yeah, I still have two. That always happens.
Yeah.
He, yeah. Great work with, you know, responsive, my medication, they appreciate that. I also want to say thanks to Tim. The first time actually I met him, I think that I remember meeting him. He's not in his current role, just COVID time. He was checking the stop box at another's house and I was out and we've got kind of a long stop box to the level of driving. We might take a look at this super friendly, chat about what it was like to be in isolation in COVID and it was nice to see people and so. That face, I appreciate it. Also, your willingness to answer questions and. Thank you.
I don't think not. I can't remember.
Okay.
Well, I would say. For his contribution to this organization right here. It's taken from us a point almost every week. And. Correctly huge. Don't, don't forgive us.
All set. Zach?
I, I swore off flip flop. This doesn't need to be in the minutes. All my stuff can just be Zach mobile black. When I was six years old, I wore my blue beanie back, back spike to the Shepherd Post Office. It was a little bit slippery. I opened the door as a little kid and door closed and shoved me all the way across because it's the corral floor and flip flops are really slippery. Bang my foot on it, got the mail on the back and I discovered that my big toenail had flipped. And that was it for flip flops for me. Only at the beach now. If you, if folks haven't heard, there were a couple of recent graduates from Dexter who recently died. Give good vibes to them. Having two of my classmates die during school, it's a really weird thing because you're invincible and you can't imagine that type of thing happening. So if you see them, there, there are a lot more resources available here. Try to point them in that direction. I did just again, want to touch my no vote for the appropriation act. As I refresh my memory, we increased it for the pedestrian improvements originally to get the kids to the school. We left it up the next year because we had identified projects. And my general philosophy is if we raise it for something and then we're done with that thing, we ought to bring it back down. And I recognize that it was a luxury to have that kind of philosophical vote. I know this night took advantage of it with the one percent processing fee many times as well. Don't have general form of the budget though. And if folks were. I want to apologize for my extreme frustration with the fire station project because of my background. I was able to see the things that were shown today, that the costs were the same essentially. And part of my frustration is not being able to communicate that effectively for folks to actually believe me. And I feel partly because of my inability to communicate that, we've added six million dollars to an eight million dollar project for our citizens, which is huge. I feel that. I grew up with a single mom. I got the, the free lunch tickets. We didn't have cards. We literally had to stand in front of everyone and have them a ticket. So I do feel that and, and do know that we have tools to take care of that. We have the ability to raise the property exemption rate. That's all.
Thank you, Zach. That's more than just. Alex, we're going to do the Florida.
Okay, well, this is it. Um, since the end of my freshman year, it's really been my honor to serve on both our cities, any commission and city council. I've learned a tremendous amount about our city's zoning, planning and decision-making processes. And I really appreciate being able to partake in the discussions our city. And I really do feel as if I have played a role in shaping where our city has, are, is going to look like for the coming years. And so I would like to share a little anecdote about me putting the learning from being, serving this role in action. And so last year in class, my teacher was discussing how he, his family owns a property on Northern Michigan Island and local energy company wanted to put a camera tower nearby. And so he was really upset about this because he felt it was going to harm the character of the islanded community. And so I was like, maybe I can do something about this because I had experience with these processes. And so I looked at the township's master plan and zoning ordinances. And I noticed that the future land use that was proposed for the area was actually incongruent with the development that was being posed for that area. And so I pointed this out to my teacher, who then used this information to, to convey it in a, a letter to the, the planning commission of this township and ultimately through a myriad of reasons, including the one I presented there, the proposal for the camera tower was denied. And so I felt really proud to have helped a little bit in that process. So I really appreciate everything that you've all done for me. Um, it's really been great to learn from all of you and I'm really thankful for this opportunity. So, so thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. What are your plans?
So I'll be attending the University of Michigan School of Business. Um, I actually hope to study real estate development. And I think part of that interest has actually come from my role here where I, I really enjoyed whenever we have a developer come in and present to us. And so I, I think that's something I would like to do in the future.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back around and now the range presentation. Do you want to like to speak this evening?
I sat there a little minute. I was going to say hi.
Please.
I just, I came, my name is Mady Hefield. I'm the rest director of the Holiday Hustle. So I just came to make sure that there wasn't any questions with adding the half rate on this year. And so.
That's really awesome.
Thank you for passing that. It's kind of a two-fold thing. Deb from erratic will be, we tried to get it to where we could submit together, but the way we read the application is that we had to have the liquor license first. So she just got approval for the extended permit for the liquor license for the entire parking lot. And so she'll be following up soon with the fun part of the race, which will be the after part. So it's time to cool because the half marathon will start at eleven with a three and a half hour cutoff. People will have time. Crazy people will have the opportunity to do the half marathon, one mile and five k. So it's like the gift that keeps on giving, race series. And so they'll be in town all day. We've been, I started the erratic run club up November twenty twenty. We've had thirty five plus people every Wednesday night. Been a lot of them. So we're going to open the door to more people to come home for the day. So thank you for approving that. And I, I was going to see if Dan for his last thing before he left would be to make sure that the trail is plowed up to the metro. But now I'll talk to Tim. So thank you.
Thank you. And I don't think there's anyone online that wants to speak this evening. Grace and grace, so. I will see the motion for adjournment at eight twenty six. Sound move, moved by Miss Fisher. Second by Griffin and all of you, soon to say hi, please.
Hi, hi, hi.
As opposed, thank you, everyone. Have a great Fourth of July weekend. See you back here at the start of the festival.